Good evening, I'd like to convene the Monday, May 24th meeting of the Watertown Board of Education. I ask that we all please rise as Mr. Mikowski leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Davidson?
Ms. Hosking here. Mr. Flaherty?
Here.
Mr. Mikowski?
Here.
Ms. Rinaldi? Ms. Wilk?
Here.
Ms. Crady?
Here.
Ms. Rosa?
Here.
Ms. Eastman?
Here.
Mr. Malaguti?
Here.
Ms. Lindstrom?
Here.
Thank you, Mrs. Davidson. Just a note, Mrs. Rinaldi is attending senior lacrosse festivities. She will be here afterwards. Moving on to item D in the agenda, board members should have received the minutes from the May 10th, 2021 Board of Education meeting in their private, in their Friday packet. Is there a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move that the board approve the minutes from the May 10th, 2021 regular meeting as presented by Ms. Davidson.
Thank you, Mrs. Wilk. Is there a second?
Yes, I second it.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Moving on to item E, our awards and recognition. This evening, the Board of Education would like to recognize two Watertown High School seniors who have received the Connecticut Association of Schools CIAC Scholar-Athlete Award. The Scholar-Athlete Program annually recognizes two high school seniors from member Connecticut high schools whose academics and athletic careers have been exemplary, whose personal standards and achievements are a model to others, and who possesses high levels of integrity, self-discipline, and courage. This evening, we'd like to announce that our first recipient is Emma Gallagher. Emma has had an outstanding academic career, finishing eighth in her graduating class, and continues to push herself with many honors and AP classes. She is the treasurer of the National Honor Society and a two-time officer of the Watertown High School Model UN. She is also a member of the World Language Honor Society, was honored as a Student of the Month, and also received the Underclassmen Scholastic Excellence Award. Emma participated in cross-country, indoor track and outdoor track, and was part of the Watertown High School sports teams for every single season of her entire high school career. Emma earned all iron for cross-country and all NVL for track, two times, and an all-state for cross-country her senior year. Emma was also named the most outstanding senior in cross-country this fall. She was captain of cross-country, indoor and outdoor track teams, and was selected to take part in the NVL Leadership Conference. Congratulations to Emma Gallagher, our Watertown High School Class of 21 Scholar-Athlete, whose name will be added to the permanent Scholar-Athlete plaque that hangs just outside of the Watertown High School gymnasium. Emma, please come forward if you're here. Our second Scholar-Athlete for 2021 is Keith Coet. Keith has displayed a consistent record of academic achievement and leadership throughout his high school career. He is finishing 11th in his graduating class, along with the achievement of earning high honors every single marking period while taking both honors and AP classes. As a freshman and sophomore, he earned the Underclassmen Scholastic Excellence Award. Keith joined the World Language Honor Society as a sophomore and then was accepted to National Honor Society as a junior. As a part of Link Crew, he led freshmen through their transition into Watertown High School. Keith was also one of five people nominated for an Anti-Defamation League facilitation workshop sophomore year, and was also honored as Student of the Month in November of 2019. Keith was an all-NVL track athlete as a freshman and sophomore, the team's leading point scorer as a sophomore, a competitor at the state meet, and qualified for the state opens. Keith earned all iron honors in soccer as a sophomore, and earned all NVL and all-state as a senior. He was chosen as the captain for the Watertown High School soccer and track teams his senior year. Congratulations to Keith, our Watertown High School Class of 21 Scholar-Athlete, whose name will also be added to the permanent Scholar-Athlete plaque that hangs right outside the gymnasium. So congratulations to Keith Coet. Moving on in our award recognitions, Dr. Villanueva will talk to us about our Connecticut Invention Convention Honors.
Good evening, everyone, and it is my pleasure to speak to the Connecticut Invention Convention, it's a mouthful, participants who had their names drawn for honorable mention or awards that go right up into states and nationals. And I know that we have both principals from Polk and Judson here in support of our students. So as I call up your name, if you would so kindly, come on up to the back of the DS over here, and then Chairwoman Crady will hand you your certificate. The Watertown Board of Education would like to congratulate the following students from Polk and Judson Elementary Schools who excelled and were recognized of the Connecticut Invention Convention. From Judson Elementary School, Students Below received the honorable mention. In Grade Three, Evan Edwards, the Fan Duster Five. Nora Stentiford, the Travel Dog Bowl. Case and Hurley, the Scratchapult. From Grade Four, Suzie Seelenbinder, the Buddy Bot. Actually, what might be wonderful, and I should have thought of this before, may I put the principal of Polk and the principal of Judson perhaps on the spot to bring you up here and hand out some of the certificates? Thank you, since you're with us this evening.
They're just in a little different order than I anticipated, so I just want to make sure I don't hand anybody somebody else's award.
Thank you. From Grade Five, John Capuano, the Three-in-One Cat Loft. And Ariana Tran, the Antibacterial Patches. And now from Judson Elementary School, Students Below advanced onto the state level. From Grade Three, Frances Bravetti, Survival Stick. From Grade Four, Henley Kokilo, sorry, I didn't say that right, Kokiola, the Corner Light. Austin Stango, and the Bug Be Gone. Daniel Marrera, and the Nighttime Walker. And Olivia Franzen, the Portable Meltdown Kit. I think you should all win prizes for the titles of your inventions.
Absolutely.
Those are great. In Grade Five, Lily Roberts, the Pool Protector, and I also learned just from this morning that I believe Lily may have made it to Nationals, is that correct? Congratulations, Lily. And from Polk Elementary School, from Grade Four, Keegan Corr's, the Screwbooter. Riley Mays, the Wheel of Decision. And from Grade Three, Mia Flamengo, the Music Muffs. Shane Peck, the Sopinator. And from Polk Elementary School, Students Below advanced onto state finals. In Grade Three, Willa Zaneski, the Snow Socks. And in Grade Five, Kyle McGuire, the Magic Mask. And last but not least, Miles Kellenhauser, the Bunk Box. Congratulations. Congratulations, everyone. I would typically shake your hand, but I just want to give you a big wave of congratulations to all of you.
So, we normally would want to see all of their inventions, and usually we walk around and we take a recess and all to see them, but because of the current restrictions, we can't do that. But I want all the students to know that we're all super excited to hear about your inventions, and I'm going to try to get as much information about them as I can to share with the rest of the board at a later time. But we are super, super proud of you for being involved in this and then to receive awards for it and honorable mention, we're super, super proud. So we're going to take your picture, if you don't mind, because it's a really special occasion. Board members in the front, you can screech together if you'd like.
They're covering the kids.
They are. Why don't we have the kids come right in front of the desk?
Yeah. You guys can stand right in front of the desk there, and we'll take a picture of you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Congratulations, all of you.
All right, so I think board members will probably have to stand, we have some really tall students. Some of us might have to be on our tippy toes. And slide on down. In the first place, we're going to look a lot of different places. The first place we're going to look is that Mrs. Davidson, she's the one in the green shirt telling you where to stand. All right, so everybody look straight ahead at Mrs. Davidson.
All right, right here, everybody, ready, one, two, three, all eyes on me. Very good.
All right, now we're going to look over to the left side, all the way on there, everybody, perfect. All right, now we're going to change it up, and we're going to turn all the way to the right.
That's what it feels like to be a model.
That's right. Model student. All right, everybody get their photos? Congratulations to all of you. There are some, there's some cookies and drinks outside of the room for you if you'd like to take them on the way home or to stay and eat them here, you're more than welcome to.
And I just found out that Henley also made Nationals today, so congratulations, Henley, for that.
All right, moving on to item F, our PTO recognition. The Watertown Board of Education would like to honor this evening the parent-teacher organizations and their executive committees for their outstanding service to our community. And to help us express our appreciation for all the work that they have done, I have Mr. Malaguti first, who'd like to say a few words.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am privileged this evening to speak on behalf of the board, along with Karen Hosking, to give thanks to our parent-teacher organization. We thank all members, past and present, for their generous contributions and continual relentless dedication to our children, community, and all of those who are a part of the Watertown Education family. As a parent of two daughters in the school system, I have witnessed firsthand the passionate efforts the members of the PTO put forth. The selfless community engagement is one of the reasons I elected to serve and remain an active participant in all school-related causes. As a board member, I am able to appreciate the value of communication provided by the PTO leaders. The complex landscape COVID has created brought forth many new unforeseen circumstances this past year, and the consistent open communication has ultimately strengthened our bond as a school community. This undoubtedly proved to be a blessing in disguise. Thank you to the PTO for being the glue that seamlessly binds our school community. We are collectively grateful for your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Malaguti. Mrs. Hosking?
When asked to pull together a few words to both thank and recognize our PTOs, I thought, where do I start? So I did what most of us do today and relied on technology. I Googled "PTO." What is a PTO? I found that a PTO provides assistance to teachers within the classroom settings, raises funds for educational materials and experiences, advocates school and family social interaction, and provides an unbiased forum for sharing information on issues that impact our children. But I know both from this experience that it only hits the tip of the iceberg. As a parent, as an educator, and now as a board member, I've gotten to see the role of the PTO through many different experiences. As a parent, I became a member of Baldwin's PTO when my children were in kindergarten. I was unable to take part in the activities that happened during the school day, but still found many ways to serve and volunteer, as I know you all do. It was wonderful to be a part of this dynamic support team and to see how it benefited my own children and their education. It also reinforced to them firsthand how community support strengthens bonds and accomplishes goals. From book fairs to enrichment activities to bingo and craft nights, money was raised and experiences were enjoyed together. As a staff member, I knew that the PTO always had our backs. If there was an activity that supported the curriculum, met a need within the school such as anti-bullying, or how to meet your goals and dreams, or a fun night that was appropriate for our age group, the Swift PTO was ready and willing to support it. Many times, it was your response to a family within our building that needed support through hard times, or a student who needed funding for a trip or activity that you also supported that made our school more of a community, not just a place to learn. You came through knowing that there was much more important lesson in that support. You always asked the questions to see what we needed, all of us, from administrators to teachers, to support staff, to our parents, and most importantly, to our kids. You are the eyes and ears at each level and connect us to our families and community. I remember parents' reluctance, especially at the middle school level, to become involved, but always thankful if they did. I know that this is true at every level, in every building in our district. Now as a board member, I know you as allies with our teachers. You strengthen communication between our families and our schools. You volunteer countless hours to make a difference. You sit on boards and organize fundraisers. You consistently ask the question, what does our school need right now from us? That is the role that you take on. Your answer today will almost always be certainly from your answer two years from now, and was certainly different over the last year and a half. I am sure it is very different from the answer at each of our schools right now here in our district. That's perfectly okay. You make an impact in the lives of our kids, and that makes all the difference. We thank you for your support, your communication, and your commitment to Watertown Public Schools. We could not be Watertown Public Schools without you, and I guarantee we would not want it any other way.
Thank you, Mrs. Hosking. As beautifully expressed by Mr. Malaguti and Mrs. Hosking, in order to support our students, our PTO members and executives have created strong working relationships between our parents and our teachers. Your volunteer efforts in planning activities and events and fundraisers are greatly appreciated, and we sincerely, as a board, thank you for everything that you have done, for your hard work, for your dedication, for all the things that didn't happen at your own house because you were making sure they happened in our buildings. So please come forward as we call your name, and then take a place behind the Board of Education so we can mark this occasion with a photograph. So first, we'd like to call up President of John Trumbull Primary School PTO, Allison Damaris. Vice President of John Trumbull PTO, Carolyn Boynton. Judson Elementary School PTO President, Becky Zadlow. Polk Elementary School PTO President, Lauren Kellenhauser. Polk Elementary School Co-President, Jen Grable. PTO Co-President at Polk, Matt Grable. Julie Hayes, President of the Swift Middle School PTO. Jessica Hutchko, Vice President of the Swift Middle School PTO. Robin Guerra, President of the Watertown High School PTO. And last, but certainly not least, our own Mindy Davidson, Vice President of the Watertown High School PTO. And Kara Edwards, Judson Elementary School. Thank you all so much for the work that you do. If you could just come to the middle of the back of us, we can take a quick photo. If board members would sit and move in if possible. And poor Matt's not going to get his corsage. Going to look straight ahead? All right, congratulations. Okay, moving on to item G, our report from our student council representative. Natalie?
JTPS, last week kindergarten orientation was held. They were so excited to welcome 150 new kindergarten family members. Parents listened to a brief presentation and then toured the school. PTO members and one student were able to answer questions and share the amazing things that happened at JTPS. The PTO held two special events. The first was the book fair where students were allowed to shop for the first time since the pandemic. The second was a Cookies and Canvases virtual event where students painted a scene under the direction of a parent volunteer. Polk, in April, Polk participated in the American Heart Association Healthy Heart Challenge and Jump Rope for Heart. They raised $630 in support of this cause and learned more about the importance of heart health and being active. Thank you to Polk's PE teacher, Mr. Lawyer, for putting it together. Smarter, balanced assessments continue to be administered to all students in grades three through five. Students have completed math and English Language Arts Computer Adaptive Test. The Math Performance Test is the last one that took place today. Polk is proud of their students' perseverance and hard work throughout testing. Class placement process has begun for the 2021-22 school year due to the budget passing. Letters were shared with families last week that asked what the best learning environment is for their child. In early June, Polk staff will work to develop class lists for rising fourth and fifth graders. They will also plan Step Up Days for the final week of school, which will give students opportunity to meet their teacher and classmates for the next school year. New third grade students will come for a visit in mid-June, and families are invited for orientation on Wednesday, June 9, and Thursday, June 10. Polk staff is eager to meet new third graders and their families. Fifth graders will visit Swift Middle School on Wednesday, June 9. Families are invited to participate in orientation session that evening as well. Mrs. Milo and Mrs. Schultes' fifth-grade ELA classes recently celebrated their poetry unit with a poetry café. Students shared original poems that they published during this unit. They demonstrated their understanding of figurative language and conventions such as rhythm and rhyme. Fourth graders in Mrs. Eflern's class were surprised with a glow party last week to celebrate their hard work. Students engaged in fun learning centers such as building geometric shapes out of glow sticks, or glow bowling that helped them practice for the S-Back Assessment. Third and fourth graders who worked with Mrs. Boehner and Ms. McQueeney concluded their study of life cycles with the release of butterflies last week. Judson, class placement has begun. A letter was sent out to families asking for feedback on what learning environment was best for their children. Teachers will create the class list the first week of June to prepare for Step Up Day on Monday, June 14. Fifth graders will visit Swift on Wednesday, June 9. Judson and Polk are excited to host third grade orientation. Information was sent home to families on Friday, May 14 with an opportunity to sign up for one of four time slots. The maximum number of people per session is 25. Two sessions are scheduled for Wednesday, June 2 at 3:00 and 3:45 PM, and two sessions on Thursday, June 3 at 5:00 and 5:45 PM. The structure will be the same across both buildings, but each orientation will take place at the school where your child is attending. Mrs. Molly Stepka has organized a Surf Into Summer Outdoor Reading Activity for Friday, June 11. Parents can come to read with their child. There will be a book swap where students will be able to choose a new book to start their summer reading journey. Students who took the ELA and Math CAT tests, the Math Performance Test took place today. Make-ups are continuing to be scheduled. Staff, students, and families have been very supportive and have done a fantastic job during testing weeks. Swift, Swift is excited to announce that an in-person graduation will be held at WHS on June 16 at 10:30 in the morning. Graduates and their families will also be joining the townwide parade honoring WHS graduates on June 13. Swift is grateful to the WHS administrators and staff for their support and assistance with these two celebrations. A grade eight school counselor and one of Swift's special education teachers have joined together to create a program that assists students as they transition to high school. The class tackles topics like developing and maintaining friendships and navigating social media safety. Lastly, grade six students recently decorated statements of encouragement that they sent to fifth grade students in order to show their support prior to the S-Back testing window. The sixth grader spent an afternoon choosing words that conveyed camaraderie, pride, confidence, and then colored them with bright colors before mailing them to fifth grade peers. Swift will be welcoming fifth grade students on June 9 for a visit and tour. Incoming sixth grade parents are welcomed to an in-person orientation the evening of June 9. They will learn about academic offerings, programs in art and music, and after-school opportunities like sports and clubs. The presentation will begin at 6:00 PM in the Swift auditorium. WHS, all-state testing has been completed for this year, including the SAT School Day Administration and the Next Generation Science Standards Assessment. Students preserved and tried their very best on these assessments. On Friday evening, the senior prom was held at La Bella Vista in Waterbury. The 110 attended had a great time, and the weather was perfect for the event. Thank you to senior Jordan Elliott for serving as the DJ for the evening and for creating a fun atmosphere for students to enjoy. Spring athletic season is wrapping up this week, and students displayed great sportsmanship in all activities throughout the season. Congratulations to both the boys and girls tennis teams for making the NVL finals. Fall sports registration is now open for all students, including incoming ninth graders, and it will be great to have a sport again right at the start of the next school year. We are planning and looking forward to a number of June events, including the Junior Picnic at the Farmington Club, National Honor Society induction, Scholarship Night, Underclassmen Awards Night, Senior Car Parade, Senior Picnic, and Graduation. We continue to move step by step back to a sense of normalcy as we add these events back to our calendar. Lastly, grade 12 students have completed and submitted their capstone projects, along with presenting their projects to their SSP groups. Students engaged in projects of their choice based upon their interests, completed research about... completed research about their topics, and explored how their topics connect to the world outside of school and to future careers. We'll include a list of capstone topics in this year's graduation program.
Thank you so much Natalie. Does anybody have any questions for Natalie?
Yes, Madam Chair. I don't know if this is actually a question for Ms. Lindstrom, maybe more for Dr. Parlato. Since it's a school update, do we know how the baseball team did this afternoon? Sorry, that was pressing.
When I heard both tennis teams won the NVL and became the champions, I was really impressed. Really happy for the students and also for the coaches, especially Mr. Miller. I believe it was his first in 23 years. I know the girls have won before, but it's really, really, doesn't get old when the Watertown are champions. Thank you. One last question for me. Did you enjoy the prom?
Yes.
Very happy as a board that you were able to celebrate that and have that in person. Any other questions for Natalie at this time? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move right on to the superintendent's recommendations and report.
Thank you. All right, so a couple of updates. And since Natalie gave such a good update on everything that's happening, you can probably tell that it's a busy time of year as we wind down with end-of-year events. I was able to attend the World War I Memorial Ceremony that was, took place just over by the green, that was hosted by the Watertown History Museums. That was wonderful to see everybody out there. And as you heard from Natalie, there's a lot going on, and so you will continue to get updates from each of your building principals as more events come up. There is a mental health panel that is being hosted by our high school this coming Tuesday evening from 6:30 to 8:00 PM, so do patch in for that. COVID clinics are still going on, and so Hartford Healthcare is now working with Torrington Area Health to offer those COVID clinics in Torrington. So if you're still looking for a vaccine, you can certainly reach out to them. In addition, for our food service, don't forget that food is also still available for pickup over weekends, even the long weekend with Memorial Day coming up, so feel free to grab yourself a lunch or breakfast if you need it. And kindergarten registration, although that started way back when in January, just a reminder, if you have a neighbor or you yourself have somebody who's going to be the age of kindergarten coming up this year, to please go ahead and register. It helps us kind of see where our enrollment is as soon as we possibly can. And lastly, we had a wonderful safety and security meeting just this past week with a number of our town partners, our fire department, our police department, our town manager as well was there, and our fire marshal, and administrators from our Board of Education. And it was great to just see everybody coming together, to see a collective kind of need to look at our security and how we want to move forward into the future. And that's it for this evening. Thank you.
Any questions for the superintendent? Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to item I, a presentation on the American Rescue Plan and SR3 funding. Dr. Villanueva, I turn the meeting over to you.
Thank you. And so at this point, I'm actually going to call up our cabinet. If you have not met, our curriculum and instruction director, Ms. Lisa Fekety, as well as our Director of Special Services, Amy Shovell. And we have our Facilities Manager, oh my goodness, I have no words today. Our Facilities Manager, Gino Fiala here this evening, and our Director of Technology, Jeff Turner, who works everything in the back usually at all of our meetings, but you'll be able to hear from him as well. The long-awaited ARP-ESR, that is what they're calling it in short form, which stands for the American Rescue Plan or the American Relief Plan. SR3 funds that districts are anticipating to receive this coming school year. And at this point, we just wanted to give everybody a little background on what we've received so far. We anticipate that we will continuously get more information about this plan as we move forward, but we wanted to give a little primer as the first round of our plan needs to be completed in about a month. And so bringing everybody into the loop so that we know where we're headed is an important part for us. So I turn it over to Ms. Fekety.
Good evening, everybody. Hope everybody's well. Jeff, if you, oh, I have the remote, actually. So today, we're going to talk a little bit about reentry planning. And as Dr. V said, part of the planning is the ARP-ESR funding. But it seemed like a really good time to kind of pull a bunch of different pieces together rather than kind of looking at things in silos. So as you know, this is the final year of our district improvement plan. It will sunset at the end of this year. So what our job right now to do is to kind of take that plan, take stock of where we are, what's left on that plan to continue through next school year, as well as look at some of the recommendations and the requirements from the state of Connecticut for planning for the ARP-ESR funding. So as we know, we've come off of a couple of years of very interesting school. And so we know we're going to have a lot of factors to consider as we move through our planning, such as unfinished learning and also really needing to accelerate our students. Social emotional needs of students and staff are something that's really at the forefront of our thinking. And then re-engagement of students and family. And on top of that, there's always factors that we kind of have to contend with, which is, you know, stretched budgets. And we're very thankful that the budget did pass, but the ARP funding, and now that the budget has passed it, it provides us an opportunity for some planning. And then also just time is always the hottest commodity in a school system, so that limited time. But what we know is that we're Watertown and that we will persevere and that we will find a way to work together to give our students what they need to move forward. I think Jeff's messing with me in the back room. I'm pressing it. Okay. So moving forward, we're trying to be very intentional and clear about the work that we need to do to carry us into next year. So we're using a learning target to frame our work, and we will unpack this target tomorrow at Administrative Council as well with our administrators. But really, the task at hand is to synthesize all of these different pieces to put together a really coherent plan moving into the next school year. So we need to synthesize and prioritize Watertown's vision of a graduate, the district improvement plan that we're still carrying through, and then also now these priorities that were put forth by the state of Connecticut for us to plan for next year. So we have all of those pieces to put together to plan for. So when all is said and done, these are the products that we will need to have. We will have to have a completed grant application for the ARP-ESR funding, which unpacks the ways that we're going to use those funds. We'll also need to develop a Safe Return to In-Person Instruction and Continuity of Services Plan, which is a combination of just all of those mitigation strategies, but also about the learning and specific requirements there. And then all the while updating our own district improvement plan. So in thinking about what makes a really high-quality and cohesive plan, these are the criteria for success that we will use to measure ourselves by to make sure that we're doing our due diligence and putting forth a really strong plan. So as you can see here, there's many factors that we're looking at, such as really prioritizing our initiatives and having attainable action steps. It's very easy now, knowing all of the needs, to say we're going to do 20 things. But if you're not going to do 20 things well, then you're much better served to prioritize and do 10 things really well as high-leverage points. We also really have to prioritize our spending and strategically align that spending with our action steps, using all of the funding sources that we have, including whatever appropriation we end up with for the ARP-ESR 3, the approved district budget, and then the title funds. The other important component there is the professional learning piece. There's limited time for professional learning. And so again, if you plan for initiatives but then don't back them up with the appropriate professional learning, those initiatives are not necessarily going to be as successful as they should be. So that's another piece that we'll have to consider in our planning, how we could use every bit of time that we have with our staff, maybe in some new and creative ways this coming school year, to provide that professional learning that's necessary, including the traditional days that are in our calendar, but also thinking of how we could better utilize staff meetings, PLCs, and even build in some release time. So the state also released their five priorities, and they're listed on this slide. As you can see, the first box is learning acceleration, academic renewal, and student enrichment. The second is family and community connections, social, emotional, mental health and needs of students and staff, and then the strategic use of technology, and finally, building safe and healthy schools. The other piece that the state has really stressed is that it's our responsibility to make sure that we're using an equity-focused lens and that when we're doing all of our planning, that we're really focused on the populations in our school district that were most impacted by COVID-19. So really taking into consideration that stakeholder group. So it's kind of a dual task where we need to help with the unfinished learning while making sure that we're all accelerating at an appropriate pace. And this piece has certainly been highlighted in a number of places from the state, that that is the population that we need to make sure that we're really focused on. So in getting ready for our planning, I think it was important to kind of see how these pieces connect. And as you can see from this slide, it does, it's a slide that presents a crosswalk from our district improvement plan to the priorities in the ARP-ESR guidelines. So you can see, they really do line up quite nicely. So we have Watertown Cares, and you can see where the two of the priorities from the ARP-ESR guidelines is social, emotional, mental health, and building safe and healthy schools. And then for Watertown Learns, it's the learning acceleration, the strategic use of technology. And then Watertown Leads is the family and the community connections. So you could see that they really do kind of dovetail together. So it just makes sense, since we're making the plan for the state, that we consider all of these pieces in a holistic way. So the procedure that we will follow to achieve this work is detailed on this slide. We already started a little bit last week in Admin Council, doing some initial brainstorming, looking at the ARP-ESR guidelines and starting to unpack a little bit those five priority areas. And like I said, we did do some initial brainstorming. Tomorrow is our next Administrative Council meeting, and we're really going to kind of take into consideration the next level of work and start to dig a little bit deeper into those five priority areas, as well as our district improvement plan, which will eventually lead into creating and publishing the reentry plan. And that will be on the website, also in paper form. And then we will also have to complete the ARP-ESR plan application in the grant system. And so when all of those pieces are done, we should have one really nice cohesive package moving forward. And then in the fall, when we return to school, that will be unpacked with staff. The other important thing to mention is that along the way, we are really working hard to make sure that there's representation from all of our stakeholders in the development of this plan. And some of the examples of that are on the right side of the slide, such as I know, you know, the public comment of Board of Ed meetings, our Administrative Council meetings, and the retreat to gain administrator input. Dr. V has been holding staff focus group meetings, and then we're going to leverage some parent surveys this spring so that we're really collecting information from all of our stakeholders in developing our plans. So this next slide, which is really the concluding slide, each of the person, each of the people in Cabinet will come up and just talk for a minute about their piece. The other thing that really fits nicely is that there's five priority areas, which really match the jobs of the five main Cabinet members. So that will help to kind of jigsaw this work. So I'm going to turn it over right now to Amy, who will talk about the social and emotional learning piece.
Hi, everyone. So for our social, emotional, and mental health pieces, what we're going to start exploring is really starting to build on and create new, but exploring and creating new, and expanding, I'm sorry, can't think today, our community partnerships and looking at where we can bring more supports into schools, looking at our mental health supports that are currently in our schools and how we can continue and increase those, looking at our in-district programmings and increasing our social skills and social emotional supports there, as well as really finalizing our ruler role. COVID has delayed some of that, so it wasn't as complete as we would like it to be at this point. So we have some big plans to get that completed. And then looking at best practice and implementation within our schools for next year to take it to another level. So those are our focuses in that area for right now.
Okay, Gino's next for building safe and healthy schools.
Hello, everybody. So as far as buildings are concerned, I think we're in a good space right now with the building as far as conditions, cleaning, et cetera, filter change, and the things that we've done to get where we are today. Our next step in the facility side would be the social distancing piece with the furniture. Right now, we have a lot of furniture in storage containers. And upon CDC guidance, we can return the schools back to the way they were, cafeterias, et cetera. You know, the auxiliary gym, as an example, the auxiliary gym at Swift is being used as a cafeteria. A lot of the stages are being used as cafeteria space for eating. So we're just going to keep our ears open, our eyes open, and if the CDC makes some new guidance for us, we can return things back to normal from that perspective. But I think we're in a good space right now as far as facilities. Okay, thanks.
Okay, and then it's me, learning acceleration, academic renewal, and student enrichment. Some of the things that I'm really personally excited about is kind of seeing to fruition some of the initiatives that we started working on a few years ago, but then there was this little lull in between with the COVID pieces. So we're ready for full-on implementation of SRBI in the fall, which is going to be a huge lever for us to make sure that we're differentiating instruction. I'm also excited to say that I believe that we will be able to roll out new math programs, 6 to 12 is the hope. And piloting, I've been able to arrange for an elementary pilot of one of the programs. So that is something to look forward to next year. But I'm really looking forward to the time with the administrators in wrapping our head around this new journey that we'll be on next year to really get that building input of what their needs are so that we can really plan collaboratively together.
Hello, everybody. So in technology, what we're really looking to build on is what went well this year, what didn't, and how we can improve. And it really is the learning process. What do we want to do in technology? What are our objectives? And how do we want to get there? Second thing is really building up on the one-to-one initiative, seeing where we are this year, where we had to have something really quickly and built it, not just quickly, but also fairly well. So seeing where we need priorities, what consumables, things of that nature, how we're going to build that over the next few years so that it's a self-fulfilling prophecy or program itself. And then finally, how are we going to leverage the programs that we really base on? Google Enterprise, 365, how we can add apps, how we can add extensions, using the students who find most of the stuff that we really want. And there are test cases, being able to grow from within, not always spending money, but looking to use the tools that we currently have.
Thank you. And then I have the last category here, which is family and community connections, which really is building that bridge between our schools and our families at home. Whether it's support that's coming in through social, emotional, and mental health needs, or whether it's working with our families to garner enough public input on how, you know, what their thoughts are around what the, you know, the buildings should look like in terms of CDC guidance, so on and that, so on and so forth. So those family connections are going to be key next year because we were not only impacted at the student level, but we were impacted at a full community level. So that is the next kind of category that takes our Watertown Leads to the next level. I do want to say that I would like to thank our Cabinet, who has really rallied and come around very quickly to work together with me and to work very soon with the Administrative Council as we continue forward in getting this together and really connecting it to our current strategic plan. It is no small feat to have something like this turned around in one month. And as much as it is turned around in one month, I want us to all remember that this will be ongoing and an iterative process that will have revisions as we continue on throughout next year. As guidance adjusts, as we come back to more full in-person learning, the goal is always going to be to have that tight instructional core experience for the students, teachers, and the content that they're engaging in. Thank you.
I don't know if anybody has any questions, but thank you very much for your attention. And I look forward to sharing with you further down the road of where we are with things. And I will, I actually wanted to make one other comment. They did release the grant document today, so I had a chance to kind of look at some of the prompts for the grant document. And I actually thought they would be very useful for us in our own planning. It requires a SMART goal for each of those priority areas. And I always think that that's good if you have something really concrete like that to measure yourself by, to see if your action steps are actually moving you forward as a district. So thank you for your attention, and if you have any questions for Dr. Villanueva or myself, or any of the Cabinet, to be honest.
Thank you, Mrs. Fekety. The first thing I want to say is to reiterate what our superintendent just shared. just shared. To have you all here, first of all, is wonderful for the Board, to see you in person, all of you together. Thank you to Gino Fiallo, our Facilities Director, for being here and presenting, and to Mrs. Chauval for being here, our Director of Student Services, and for yourself, Mrs. Fekidi, Director of Curriculum Instruction, and to our Director of Technology, Mr. Turner. It's great to have you all here. It's been a long time, and I appreciate the work that you're doing, as I know everybody does. I just want to talk about the funding aspect of this for a moment. It seems that, you know, that there are requirements for the state, for us to receive the American Relief Plan, or American Rescue Plan, as it's been called. There's strict criteria to be met. And it seems like our district improvement plan and what you presented this evening really is in line with what the state is requiring us to do to receive those funds to help our students. So it's nice to see that it's very much aligned with what the state is looking for. How many years do you see this recovery plan? I know the funding is for two years, and to be spread out over two years. But if you were to guess, I know you still have the work ahead of you to work all this out, but how many years do you think our students will need to be in that recovery stage?
Did you want me to answer, or did you want to answer?
Sure, I can, I can speak to a little acceleration, but why don't you go first, and I'll jump in after.
I would be very, if I'm being completely transparent, I'll be very curious to see what our baseline data looks like in the fall. And I'm cautiously optimistic that it may be better than we're thinking. However, I do believe that there will be gaps, and I think there will be things that we'll have to, other factors that we'll have to contend with in the fall. So it's really hard to judge to say, but I would hope that within a few years, most of our students will hopefully get back on track, if we're able to do some compacting of curriculum and accelerating and prioritizing. That's certainly the hope.
So do you see some of the iReady-related interventions coming into play, and that data helping us out in that process?
I do. I feel like the revised SRBI process, who would have known when we were back in a few years ago, talking about revising that process, who would have known how much we would have needed it? Like, sometimes it's just kismet, and things happen how they're supposed to. I think that will be a huge lever for us to have a solid K to 12 process, and to really be looking at data, to be really smart and strategic about the services that we're providing to kids. I think that will be the most probably important lever.
To Ms. Fekidi's point, a lot of the guidance that we've been receiving from the state is not really around remediation, but more about acceleration. And it really is, it goes back to that image that I always have of all boats rise with the tide, I think that's the saying, all boats rise with the tide. But basically, if you want to level out the one level of boats needs to either pedal harder, paddle harder, or, you know, to double the speed in order to get to that point. Not everybody needs that particular method or process, but knowing that is the kind of the goal. Just like Ms. Fekidi said, we can use the SRBI process to get our students where we need to get them to. We can curriculum compact, so that we use baseline data, as opposed to just, here we go again, with just our existing curriculum. That baseline data is going to be super important for us as the launching off point for where each one of our students need to be next year.
Do Board members have any questions for Mrs. Fekidi or the Superintendent? Mr. Mikowski?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. First of all, thank you, Mrs. Fekidi. Thank you, Dr. Villanueva, your team for this, you know, especially in this fiscal environment, even looking forward at something and putting this together is just daunting. So the amount of rigor that you put into this, just to build the foundation to look forward, is awesome. Thank you. I think my first question, or kind of comment is, first of all, I want to thank whoever put the words "mental health" back into black and white, into print, right? We talk about social, emotional, it's become almost a buzzword, but mental health, or as I like to call it, brain health, is critically important. And we're seeing it in our youth today, where brain health is taking different paths. And so I think my first question is, you know, I heard Mrs. Chauval talk about resources, identifying resources. Can we back it up a little bit? My biggest concern is identification, right? What are we doing as a district to help improve the identification of those underlying traits that can help us find, you know, potential challenges that a student might be having? And we know it's a broad spectrum, I don't want to get into specifics, but maybe just talk a little bit about, right, where the rubber meets the road? Where, what are we doing, what can we do, looking forward on the identification piece?
So that's something Ms. Fekidi and I have actually talked a lot about, is looking at how we can actually start to incorporate social, emotional, mental health wellness into our SRBI process, so that we're not just looking at academics, but we're also looking at behavior, attendance, engagement, and all that, and looking at what are some tiered supports that we can start to put in place for mental health and social, emotional wellbeing, in addition to the academic interventions in tiers. So we're starting that conversation. We're starting to talk about how we can start to incorporate that and work with our SRBI coordinators on that, as well as our mental health providers within the district.
Awesome, thank you. Again, because I think if we don't identify or identify early enough, it doesn't mean jack what the resources are, right? It becomes such a daunting task to get us up to speed. So, thank you. The second question I have is, can someone explain equity-focused lens? What exactly does that mean?
Can I just go back to the other question?
Oh, sorry, yes.
Really quickly, just because I thought of something as Ms. Chauval was speaking. We were also accepted into the pilot for the DESA, which is a screener that will help us to identify. It'll be given like a benchmark three times a year. And then there's a whole host of other assessments that can be leveraged to use with kids if we're recognizing that there are issues. So that's another piece. We will receive that K to 12, along with the training.
Awesome.
So that's another kind of exciting thing.
Love it. Thank you.
So to your question about an equity-focused lens, this goes hand in hand with a statement of disproportionately impacted students. At the start of COVID, just on a very grand scale, it was very clear that existing problems were exacerbated because of COVID, whether it were certain school districts or children who didn't have technology or access to technology, or whether it was the school districts of the haves and have-nots of the resources that they could, you know, draw on and fall back on. When this plan talks about an equity-focused lens, it begs us to immediately question which populations of our students were most impacted. So we have an ability to go in and look at data by subgroup, you know, whether we have students with special needs, or we have students who have free and reduced lunch eligibility, or we have students who may be of certain races. For us to be able to disaggregate that data and take a look at which students were impacted the most, or in different ways, gives us an opportunity to look at our plan in a way that can really personalize and differentiate our plan, so that all students are going to get what they need. Because not every student will respond the same way to what we put in plan. So I think that's really what they talk about when it's an equity-focused lens. I think it also goes to just access. So depending on how schools make a plan for all students to be able to access what they need. And that goes in all areas, not just technology, but in the curriculum, in the way in which we support them, through mental health supports, so on and so forth.
Thank you. Because in today's world, equity has taken on a very different light. And so I want to make sure as a district, our goal continues to be to help every child achieve their potential. End of story. And so I appreciate the way that you formulated that, and using the data and all of the resources we have in the district for us to achieve that. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on in the agenda to items of discussion. Jay, first is the non-tenured teacher notices. As you know, by state law, we had to approve the non-tenured teacher notices before the, whether we knew the referendum was going to pass. It did pass. So I will ask you this evening for a motion to rescind the non-tenured teacher notices. Is there any questions for myself or the Superintendent on that? Dr. Villanueva, do you have anything you want to add?
At this time, no, we are ready to receive those rescind letters. I know our faculty are waiting anxiously to get them.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item B of discussion, a town-wide, excuse me, a town of Watertown in Board of Ed tribute to the history and legacy of the Watertown High School Indians. Very pleased to have two special guests here this evening, our Town Manager Mark Ramo, our Chair of the Watertown Town Council, Mary Ann Rosa, and I will turn this over to you.
Thank you. So in just a moment, I'll ask our Town Manager Mark Ramo to come on up to the podium to share a few words. But I wanted to start by going back to the very first day that I was officially here in Watertown. It was January 25th, and it was my very first Board of Ed meeting, where we weren't sitting around this dais, but we were on virtually. And the Board of Education had just retired the mascot. Coming in from the outside, certainly I could see what was happening in the town, and I could also see what was happening in our school district. And it was a range of emotions from a range of people. What I did do that very evening, and what I believe our entire Board of Education also did that evening, was we made a commitment to the development of a curriculum and an honor to the historical background and culture, and the legacy of the First Nations people of Watertown. And so at this time, I'm very excited at this potential opportunity here, of this actual opportunity, for our schools and the town, in a joint partnership, to move together and to move forward in bringing a tribute to the Watertown High School Indians, and the rich history of the Native American peoples and their culture to real life in Watertown here. And so, again, our Town Manager Mark Ramo will speak a little more to it. But our schools truly are anchored in, you saw those, the Watertown Cares, Watertown Learns, Watertown Leads. And this is a real opportunity for that Watertown Leads to step up and speak up about where we are moving forward to as not only a school district, but also as a full town. So I will invite Mr. Ramo up to the podium here to say a few words.
Good evening. I'm going to put my glasses on, because the eyes don't work like they used to. Madam Chairwoman, Board members, I just want to take the opportunity and read a quote that I've read, and I thought was very interesting. "The very essence of leadership is that you have to have a vision. It's got to be a vision you articulate clearly and forcefully on every occasion. You can't blow an uncertain trumpet." And that was penned by Reverend Theodore Hesberg. "The mascot matter has created a division in our community, and that division is not one of good or bad, but a division of leaders trying to fulfill Watertown's vision of leadership. Leaders who sought change saw the use of a Native American stereotype as mascots to be a racial matter, and leaders that know the mascot as a symbol of strength, honor, and integrity sought stability. Finally, the leadership in needing to balance the tension between acceptance of change and the discipline of action to change was clearly marked by you as leaders of the Board of Education. Watertown does not need to blow an uncertain trumpet, but to refocus on our strengths and leadership." I've had several conversations with Dr. Villanueva over this topic, and I've come to appreciate her communications over this topic with me. And as we began to talk about the leadership issues that have brought this topic to fruition, the idea came, why can't we honor both? Make our change to honor the change, and we could still honor everything that was put into our Watertown Indians as a team. I'd like to propose that Dr. Villanueva and I work together under the leadership of Chairman Karati and Chairman Rosa, to come up with a memorialization of the Watertown Indians as a team, and what is actually the meaning behind that team spirit. Dr. Villanueva, I don't know if you'd like me to introduce some of the ideas I had, or?
I think that'd be wonderful. I think this is a wonderful opportunity for not only the town to be able to give that tribute to the legacy of the Watertown High School Indians, and Mr. Ramo will speak more to it, but also for the education world here to really step up and show our expertise in the history of things, right from the start of our land here in Watertown, to where we are now in the future. So I'll throw it over to you to talk about some of the details we've discussed.
Thank you. Obviously, I don't have the background for this issue, so I would very much like to work with the Board of Education on this. But some of the ideas I envision is maybe a cabinet within the town hall honoring the origination of the property to Watertown, and then working through the spirit that that Indian has become with our teams, and then working through the demarcation, this change that was created most recently. It would be a wonderful thing for us to have something like that in the school system to actually teach our children modern-day history. This is how we work through it as leaders in our town. We may not agree on the topic, but let's agree that we both have leadership in that decision-making. And then, for a fun thing, it would be nice for us to put a large W on the lower parking lot hill when you enter into the town hall. I'm working with an architect to discuss some ideas on how to do that, but to honor Watertown at the town hall, the Watertown W, and it would overlook the landfill, which, again, would be a wonderful thing for children, and I think it would be fun for the adults as well. I have already secured some persons or companies that would be interested in donating their time to do the work, and I would be happy to continue to try and find the money for funding to complete those projects.
And I'm sure we wouldn't come up with a short list of people who would be interested in donating to this very, very special project. You know, some of our conversations were around the actual location of where this tribute and legacy would be, and town hall just seems like the fitting place. One, I mean, the beautiful renovations of just the majesty of having town hall the way that it is at this time, but also as a real history piece that showcases that chronology of events for our town truly does connect here. I do want to make sure that I give Chairwoman Rosa an opportunity to also come up and share some words, along with Mr. Ramo, and then at some point, perhaps Ms. Karati will as well.
Good evening. The, obviously, the mascot issue has been one that's been very disruptive to our community. Regardless of what your personal opinion was, friends and neighbors, family members often had different opinions, and it caused a lot of discord. I think it's a wonderful thing that the Board of Education is going to incorporate a whole curriculum around that issue, and the Indian, and the importance of the heritage here in Watertown. And I think it's tremendously important that our Town Manager get credit for the time and effort he has put in to bring our community back together, and to please everyone and acknowledge everyone's opinion, respect both sides of the issue, and find a way that we can all move forward together. And that's really the goal. Watertown has always been that way when it came to sports. We've been that way with education. We just did it in passing a budget together. And I think this is another issue where we can all come together behind the time and the effort that Mark has put in the initiative, and have everyone walk away from this, please, that their opinion was respected.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman, and thank you, Mr. Ramo. Please come back up, because I'm sure this will be a little bit of a dialogue. I want to start out by saying, to echo what Chairwoman Rosa just said about your leadership, coming to Dr. Villanueva to discuss and orchestrate a healing in a way that speaks to not only what the schools and the students' and the families need, but the entire town needs. It takes a true leader to do that. And we are, if nothing, if we are nothing when we, let me make sure I say this right, it's not misinterpreted. nothing, if we are nothing when we, let me make sure I say this right, it's not misinterpreted. When we are good, when things are good and the waters are calm, we work and collaborate together beautifully. But what really says the most about our community is how we collaborate and work together when there are differences, and when things are difficult, and when the seas are choppy. And to have the two of you come together at your calling with your initiative and all the work that you did behind the scenes to get us to this point speaks volumes about the direction of the school board and the district, collaboration with the town council, but most importantly, the future of Watertown, and the way in which we move forward together in the good times, but more importantly, in the more difficult times. So I'm extremely grateful because to put your toe in that pool was not easy. And I know what many people don't know that Mary Ann Rosa alluded to was that there was a lot of conversations that you have had with people in our community to get to this point, to come here today. And I'm very, very grateful. Not only are you helping us meet what we committed to as a board to help honor the history of our Watertown Indians, but to do it in such a collaborative way and to want to have a W at the town hall, you know, that speaks volumes to future residents, to children that are playing on the landfill, to people in the future who want to volunteer in our wonderful community. There's so many things that this can represent in such a positive way for the town. So I'm very grateful for that. I want to just open it up to questions from board members at this time.
Through the chair. Just, not a question, just a statement. Mr. Ramo, great idea and the collaborative efforts there. Thank you all again very much. I was just driving by town hall last night on the way home at about 7:30, and I looked over, and I just, when you said that, I said, "That's perfect. Great idea. I'm behind it 100%. Great idea."
Mrs. Rosa? Also, a statement from Mr. Ramo. I also agree that what you suggested is a wonderful idea. And the other thing is I really respect is that we can all agree to disagree and go on from this, that we're all in this together, and we want to go on from this. And like you said, we're in Watertown, and Watertown is great, and we will go further. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from board members? Mr. Flaherty?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Comment, just to add my voice to those thanking you, thanking your Chair of the Council, thanking our Superintendent and our Chair of this Board. You didn't dip your toe in the water, you jumped in the water.
That's true.
And I'll mix all the metaphors. You sounded a very sure trumpet. And democracy is the best. It's noisy, and sometimes, the beauty of it is in the clash of ideas, and clash is the wrong word. And because out of that, you know, from many one, in this case, from many ideas, from many points of view, you're laying out together a path forward, which is beautiful, and I just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other comments at this time or questions?
Madam Chair, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ramo. Thank you, Dr. Villanueva. I appreciate the effort, but the level of hypocrisy that we are seeing right now, I think, is unbelievable. The mascot was removed because the word "Indian" was considered racist. So here, we're talking about the word "Indian." I'm all for honoring Native Americans, but here, we're going to use the word "Indian." The W is not the Indian. The W is still the logo of Watertown. And so I'm just disappointed that we're going to promote the strength of a people who truly were traumatized for a very long period of time at the founding of our country. And I just, if we're going to honor them in this way, I think we could have kept the mascot because there was no actions that hurt it. It was a symbol. And so we're going to potentially put said symbol in our town hall to be memorialized. I understand that is memorializing our history, but it's contradictory to the vote and the outcry that it's racist or that it's these other things. So, you know, that's my two cents. I'm not looking for a response of any kind. I'm just disappointed that everyone's in favor of supporting memorializing the Indian, but we just got rid of the Indian.
So, thank you for your comments, Mr. Makowski. I know you didn't ask for a response, but I am compelled to share.
Madam Chair, would you mind if I responded to that?
Sure, go right ahead.
Mr. Makowski, I appreciate your thoughts and feelings. And I actually reached out to several people who were opposed to keeping the mascot to get a better idea of their understanding, and that message was very clear to me as well. I don't understand, you haven't even given us an opportunity to present an idea. These are just some ideas. And I think if we honor the leadership behind that thought process, that that's where our strength is, not so much the Indian as a mascot or the Indian as it's been portrayed through a mascot. So I would ask that you keep an open mind and give us the ability to come up with some ideas so that we can honor those people who feel as strongly as you do, but yet we can still honor the people in town that took a leadership position, whether it was for the mascot or not, and then bring our town together. The idea is to bring the town together and not continue what you've just discussed.
I'm not intending to be divisive. I'm just pointing out, I think that, I think recognizing the history of our town is critical. I agree with that. And I look forward to hearing the recommendations. We can take that further, so I'll yield from there.
I appreciate you keeping an open mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board members, any comments or follow-ups or questions?
I just have one thing to say. I just appreciate, thank you all who are involved to at least try to come up with some thoughts to bring this town back together. However the outcome may be, I just appreciate you taking the time and trying to bring us two together.
Thank you.
I must, I will add that I was very excited when we had the opportunity to speak prior to some of your ideas about having photographs of former Indian teens and so forth in that case, and I look forward to all of the ideas that you have moving forward. And I can't thank you enough for taking a leadership role on trying to do something positive for the town and for the history of our town. And to Dr. Villanueva for honoring your commitment to the board from that evening and working so closely with Mr. Ramo on that.
Thank you. I look forward to working with Dr. V.
Thank you. Anything else? All right. Thank you so much to Chairwoman Rosa and Mr. Ramo, Town Manager, for being here this evening. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Moving on to item C, the unanticipated fiscal year '21 special education and COVID-19-related costs and appropriation request. I will turn this over to Dr. Villanueva.
Thank you very much, Chairwoman Karati. So this evening, I would like to bring our Board of Education and our public up to speed where we are on our FY '21 finances. We are running in a budget deficit, as we have spoken about earlier on. As I started in the district in just the last week of February, sorry, last week of January, early February, and jumped right into the budget process, right after that, it became apparent that we were running in a deficit. At that time, we knew that, or I knew that, there were two large buckets that were creating that deficit, one of them being special education costs, as many of you have heard me speak to in terms of our next year's budget, and then the second large bucket being COVID-19 unanticipated costs as well. So at this point, we are very close to the end of the year, and we are needing to close at a balanced year. And so we have a current deficit of $2,834,608. And that is projected to take us to June 30. That is, again, in two large buckets. So I'll just walk you through the two buckets, and then I'll talk a little bit about the strategies that we've been experiencing here to help mitigate that. The first bucket is the unanticipated special education costs, which come out to $1,380,430. These unanticipated special education costs range from a number of students who have come into our school district needing high tuition or high-cost special education support that we were not expecting. In addition to that, that includes transportation that may take our students to and from outplacements that are outside of our district and also within district. Yes.
I apologize. We just paused for a moment. Board members received this electronically, so if you want to take your phones out and take a look at that document, if there aren't any more copies, Dr. V?
Sorry about that. Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
So please feel free to do that so you can look at the document.
Give it a moment. Okay. So of the special education overages, they come in form of tuition for students who are both in district and out of district, as well as the services they require and the transportation that is involved in that. The second large bucket where we are having a budget overage is the COVID-19 expenditures that we tried our best to plan for this year, but ultimately going through the year in getting what we need to get through to June 30. That bucket totals a budget overage of $1,454,178. Now, I'm going to just explain that one a little bit. Prior to my arrival here and prior to the start of the year, the previous administration had anticipated that we might spend approximately $1.6 million in COVID-related expenses. So whether that was purchasing PPE, expanding the number of personnel in our building because of CDC-required guidance for nursing or cleaning and that sort, they had anticipated that $1.6 million would cover us throughout the remainder of this year. In actuality, in some of the categories that were anticipated, we had overages in transportation, nursing costs, custodial overtime, and what was most unanticipated, or perhaps people didn't realize, was that our food services were badly hit. Now, our food service program is a self-funded program. That means as we sell food, we earn revenue, and so that revenue helps us offset the cost of the employees that create the food and prepare the food, but also pays for the actual food that we give our students. Now, because we weren't selling food at a time during COVID where we were either remote or just food sales were very low, our food services were hit very hard, and almost half a million dollars in terms of salaries came back to our general fund to be covered by that. With that, in actuality, we spent, and we continued to spend until June 30, approximately $2,306,900 in COVID-related expenses only. Since then, we have not received enough funding. However, we have received some funding. In the way of CRF, the CARES Act grant, we received CRF funding in the amount of just approximately $319,000, in addition to some revenue from the SER-1 grant, which gives us $175,000, and then revenue from the SER-2 grant, which is about $352,000. With those approximately $846,000 worth of grants to offset our COVID costs, that brings our remaining uncovered COVID expenses down to $1,454,178. I'm throwing a lot of numbers out at you, but again, the total deficit, special education and COVID together, is $2,834,608. Now, I'm going to continue going on because, as I mentioned, I learned of the budget deficit early on just towards the end of February. And immediately, when you know of a budget deficit, you need to put things in place to try to stop it. So right away, we had a budget freeze that happened in January, and with that budget freeze, you'll see on page two that we were actually able to cut costs by $1,111,000. Now, I don't want this to be interpreted as, oh, my goodness, they found a million dollars, and they don't need it. Uh-uh. We tightened the belt so much that I have somebody who needed staples, and I'll give this example, who went from one building to another building to hand over staples because I was saying no to purchasing staples. This is when somebody puts something in and says, "Can I buy $49 worth of paper?" And I'm saying, "No, you cannot buy $49 worth of paper." So we are depleting through our supplies and our instructional materials. And in addition, you'll see that what we're offsetting here does not mean that we can apply that million dollars to our current deficit, but rather, if we had not tightened the belt, our deficit would have been beyond $3 million. In addition, in February, and again, I had just started, and how crazy it would have been that one of the strategies would have been to ultimately to recapture this amount of money to have mid-year reduction in force and layoffs happen. Luckily, we had Executive Order 7R that stopped us from laying anybody off, and so that meant for cafeteria, teachers, anybody, that we were to keep them and to do in best faith to keep them employed. And of course, that is ultimately what we would want to do, but it was due to Executive 7R. The second that Executive 7R was up, anybody that we had as temporary custodians or temporary people in terms of COVID cleaning, they were given notice that we would be completing their time with us to recapture some of those funds. In addition, as I mentioned, we are depleting our instructional supplies at this point. And also, I had our cabinet run through and try to break contracts, reduce contracts, eliminate contracts, all of that. And so that also impacted, that also impacted and impacts certain programs that we may wanted to have seen through to the end of the year and into next. And although this doesn't impact our current fiscal situation, as you know, in order for us to make it to the FY '22 budget, I had to move through a series of layoffs for our personnel as well in order to balance us out, which is a very, very difficult task for a school district where we are in the business of people. Serving people, educating people, being with people is what a school district is all about. So with that being said, we need to ask our town for an official appropriation in order to get us to balance out on the right side of up at the end of June. And so I am recommending that the Board of Education and I go to the town council for an appropriation in the total of $2,834,608 at this time. And I'm happy to answer any questions if you have.
Thank you, Dr. Villanueva. Just a couple of things I'd like to share, and then we'll open it up. We'll start with our Finance Chair, Mr. Makowski, and then take questions from other board members after that time. A few things that concerned me about the COVID expenditures were, why was Watertown projecting a deficit when other towns are not necessarily experiencing deficit from their COVID relief, from their COVID mitigation strategies and COVID expenses? And I spent some time talking to other board chairs, looking at other districts, and what I found was that we weren't so dissimilar to other districts, with the exception of three things. It's important for me as Chair and to represent the Board of Ed in making sure that we weren't overspending on COVID, that we were handling everything as wonderfully as we thought in each of the buildings, and that our administrators really did a phenomenal job in only purchasing what we needed to meet the mitigation strategies. But as Board Chair, I just felt that there was more of a responsibility that I had to the rest of the Board to find out why other districts weren't the rest of the Board to find out why other districts weren't having a deficit. And what I found was that, if you remember, a couple of years ago, we went to the Town Council to recommend a non-lapsing account for the Board of Education, where at this point, we would have had about $500,000 in that account that would carry over from year to year. Our town charter does not allow that unless it's approved by the Town Council. So we would have budgeted about $200,000 to $250,000, two years in a row, that would stay in these reserves, that could only be used for capital expenditures, emergency situations like a worldwide pandemic. What I found was a lot of towns in Connecticut have had these non-lapsing accounts for decades. So they have the reserves for emergencies. I mean, none of us could ever have predicted this type of an emergency. Perhaps if there was a massive hurricane or something like that, we would have imagined some capital expenditures. So that was the first thing that I found, that a lot of towns depleted, completely depleted their reserves, and I know that you found that in speaking to other superintendents in the state. The second thing I found was that a lot of districts stayed remote longer, didn't go back to school in person as quickly. And the third reason that I found that separates us from some other towns is that we have a much different infrastructure in Watertown. We don't have an HR department that could handle all of the contract tracing and the accommodation requests that had to be handled on a daily basis in the district from the beginning of COVID all the way up until today. So we had a lot of our administrators handling that, our superintendent, our cabinet members handling that. We didn't have middle-level supervisory staff like we do in other districts, that other districts have, where they could pull these employees to not only do those things, but fill the gaps where we needed more employees to handle the COVID regulations. Classrooms that were split up into two because we had smaller class sizes, so we had smaller facilities, so we had to move into different rooms, which would require more support staff. We don't have as many people do the contract tracing, so we needed to go ahead and hire temporary nursing, which is very costly to go through an agency to do that. So all of these things added up to that third infrastructure setting where other people had employees what they could reassign during COVID, where we were having to actually hire temporary employees to do that. So between not having reserves, having a little different infrastructure here in Watertown, and doing our best to open our buildings as quickly as possible in September, seem to be the three reasons why we are running a deficit, and some of the other towns who have a similar size to us were not experiencing such a deficit. The second thing I want to draw our attention to is, in October of 2020, our then Business Manager and Board of Education went through a process where we received notification that they were estimating that we would spend about $1.6 million over and beyond our budget on COVID expenditures. So we're now $600,000 over that estimate. In October, we couldn't have predicted how long the mitigation strategies and compliance issues with CDC and the state would remain. We couldn't anticipate that we wouldn't be able to let go of any of the support staff that we brought in on a temporary basis because of the executive order that did not allow us to do that. To your point, glad that we could continue to employ them.
Yes.
But when you have this kind of deficit, those are the strategies that districts would have to employ. This is, you know, over $2 million. Our hands were tied on that. We didn't receive any savings on the transportation contracts that are multimillion dollars from last year and this year because of the executive order that determined that school districts had to comply with their transportation contracts and pay them whether the buses were running on Wednesdays or not. So I think it's important for the Board to remember all of those things and for the public to have an understanding of where we are in terms of and how we got here with this money. It's an extraordinary amount to have to ask the town for an appropriation of. But I think the unanticipated costs with the special education, coupled with the COVID expenditures, we have no options. We have no options. From a statute standpoint, we have a fiduciary responsibility to end the year with balanced books by June 30th. Therefore, the town has an obligation, both by statute and financially to the school district, to hopefully appropriate these funds so that we can move forward into next year without any concerns. One common misperception that is out there, both in the community and I'm sure for some board members, until we received more information in the last month or so, is that the American Relief Fund that a lot of people have been talking about on the news and at the stores and asking board members, but you're getting all that money, you're getting all that money. That money has very strict criteria. It's not something we could ever use to offset a deficit like this. As our Director of Curriculum Instruction outlined earlier for us, there's a very clear criteria as to how that funding has to be used and go directly back for the mental health and academic recovery for our students. And I just want to make those points clear to the Board and to the community as we open it up for questions, and I'll turn it over to our Finance Chair.
Great. Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate you outlining all of those mitigating circumstances. You know, I equate this to the Hundred Year Storm, right? You think it's going to snow, and that one band comes and sits on you. Next thing you know, you've got four feet of snow, and you're just like, when does it stop? I think an important thing to remember is, another mitigating factor is our lean district. Year after year after year after year, we have maintained a very lean district, and Mrs. Crotty just described when we don't have, you know, I think the staffing levels that we would like to have, right? There's less talent and less resources to draw on, right? This is what happens. The other thing that Mrs. Crotty did not mention is, we were anticipating money from FEMA.
That's right.
Okay? I don't remember the exact amount.
Seventy-five percent.
Seventy-five percent. Guess what didn't come? Seventy-five percent, okay? This district was making financial decisions based off of the understanding that we would get seventy-five percent reimbursement. So right out of the gate, we were in a hole. And, you know, it's really hard to manage, it's really hard to manage a district and support our teachers and our staff when you think one thing and then all of a sudden you get the rug pulled out from under you. And so, you know, we appreciate the town's support, their willingness to listen and look at the financials and understand. I'd like to thank Dr. Villanueva and her team for combing through everything since February to mitigate the impact to the town. If she hadn't done this, if she hadn't done that at that time, the number that we would be requesting would be exponentially higher. So I think, you know, we've got a great team who worked very hard and tirelessly to support our students. We talked about it before, helping each student achieve their full potential, but at the same time being mindful of our taxpayers' dollars and the money that is spent. And so, you know, I fully support the request for this appropriation so that we can fulfill our fiduciary responsibility to close out the current fiscal year within budget. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other board members have any questions or comments they wish to make about this appropriation? Mr. Flaherty?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a comment. I want to associate myself with every word Mr. Makowski just uttered on this topic, and thank Superintendent, her cabinet, her team, and everyone here. It's difficult. We'll get through it. Thank you.
Any other board members have any questions or comments? Okay. So just a bit of information on the goings-on of how this works in Watertown, based on the charter, if you'll indulge me for a moment. So the Board would have to approve to ask for the appropriation, which we'll ask for a motion later on this evening for that. Once that happens, we would give the authority to Dr. Villanueva to officially request the $2.8 million of the Town Council. The Town Council then has to hold a public hearing on that appropriation, anything that's not in the original budget. They would have a town hearing on that, and then anybody from the public that had any questions or comments would be able to do that at that time. And then the Town Council has to then have a meeting to vote on the appropriation. That has to happen before the fiscal year ends. So it's important tonight that if there are any questions prior to approval, that we ask them now so that that process can happen in the timeframe that we have to make it happen by. The second thing I just want to share is, I want to remind board members and the public, for those who are here, of the catastrophic health insurance claims that we had just four years ago. Similar to the amount that we're facing now, the town and the Board of Ed had to put forward millions of dollars in unanticipated catastrophic health insurance claims in 12 months period, in a one-month, excuse me, in a one-year period. The town's general fund, as I've been, it's been shared with me, has recovered since that time. So I only say that not to say we can afford this, because we really can't. I say it because the strength of our town and the revenue and our community is such that in just four years, the town was able to recapture and recover those funds with the growth of our town. And so that as catastrophic as it was at the time, we can now look back four or five years later and say, okay, we're okay. And I say that to help us think about three or four years from now today, where we can sit back and say, okay, that money that had to be appropriated, we're going to be okay. The town is not going to obviously suffer long-term. The board is, and our students are not going to suffer long-term from that, and I just want to give everybody a little bit of hope that as catastrophic as the $2.8 million is, I do believe as a town and as a school and as a community, we can recover from this. We can recover. And to echo what Mr. Flaherty and Mr. Makowski so eloquently said, I thank you and your cabinet and every single administrator that went through this pandemic absolutely beautifully and took care of our families and made sure that we could open our doors. This debt is absolutely, was absolutely necessary to do that and to be in compliance. So I certainly will be voting in favor of it as well. Anything else? Anybody else? Mrs. Eastman? All set? All right. Thank you. All right. With that, we will move on to our first round of public participation. Item K, any members of the public wish to address the Board this evening? Any members of the virtual public wish to address the Board this evening? Seeing and hearing none, I will move on to item L, Communications. I see that our secretary has, do you want to join us? You're more than welcome to. I won't put you on the spot, but I don't believe there's anything. Okay. Thank you. We have no communications to report. Sorry for putting you on the spot, Mrs. Rinaldi. Item M, Committee Reports. There is nothing from Curriculum and Instruction this evening. We'll move on to Mrs. Wilk for Policy and Labor.
Just that the O E negotiations team are still working on nurses' secretarial and staff contracts.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Makowski, Budget and Finance.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think I said my piece, so no report tonight.
Thank you. And there's nothing from Facilities and Operations this evening? And back to you, Mr. Makowski, Chair of Governance and Community Engagement.
No report at this time.
All right. And moving on to item N, because I like to be a joiner, there is no report from the Board Chair this evening. Item O, Action Items, Adoption of Items to Be Approved by Consent. Item 1, Consideration of the Approval of the Watertown Annual Healthy Food Certification Statement. Mr. Makowski, will you please read the Health Food Option Statement into the record?
Yes, Madam Chair. The Watertown Public School District in pursuant to Connecticut General Statute, Section 10-215-F, the Board of Education certifies that all food items offered for sale to students in the schools under its jurisdiction and not exempted from the Connecticut Nutrition Standards published by the Connecticut State Department of Education will comply with the Connecticut Nutrition Standards during the period of July 1, 2021, through June 30, 2022. This certification shall include all food offered for sale to students separately from reimbursable meals at all times and from all sources, including, but not limited to, school stores, vending machines, school cafeterias, culinary programs, and any fundraising activities on school premises sponsored by the school or non-school organizations and groups.
Thank you, Mr. Makowski. Do we have a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair. I move that the Board approve of the Watertown Healthy Food Certification Statement as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Moving on to item B. Mr. Flaherty, will you please read the exemption for food item statement into the record?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. The exemption for food items. The Watertown Board of Education will allow the sale to students of food items that do not meet the Connecticut Nutrition Standards, provided that the following conditions are met. Number one, the sale is in connection with an event occurring after the end of the regular school day or on the weekend. Number two, the sale is at the location of the event. And number three, the food items are not sold from a vending machine or school store. An event is defined as an occurrence that involves more than just a regularly scheduled practice, meeting, or extracurricular activity. For example, soccer games, athletic games, school plays, and interscholastic debates are events, but soccer practices, play rehearsals, and debate teams are not. The regular school day is a period from midnight before to 30 minutes after the end of the official school day, and location means where the event is being held.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair. I move that the Board approve the exemption of for food item statement as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The motion passes. Moving on to item 2, Consideration of the Approval to Address Requirements for the Sale of Beverages to Students in Watertown Public Schools. Mr. Makowski, will you please read the Beverage Exemption Statement into the record?
Yes, Madam Chair. Thank you. The Watertown Board of Education will allow the sale to students of beverages not listed in Section 10-221-Q of the Connecticut General Statutes, provided that the following conditions are met. One, the sale is in connection with an event occurring after the end of the regular school day or on the weekend. Two, the sale is at the location of the event. And three, the beverages are not sold from a vending machine or school store. An event is an occurrence that involves more than just a regularly scheduled practice, meeting, or extracurricular activity. The school day is the period from midnight before to 30 minutes after the end of the official school day. Location means where the event is being held and must be the same place as the beverage sales.
Thank you, Mr. Makowski. Do we have a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair. I move that the Board approve of the Beverage Exemption Statement as presented.
Thank you, Mrs. Rosa. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Moving on to item 3, Consideration to Approve and Resign, excuse me, Consideration to Approve to Resign the Non-Tenured Teacher Notices. Do we have a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Please.
Madam Chair, I move that the Board rescind the action taken on April 26, 2021 regarding the non-renewal notices of non-tenured teachers.
Thank you, Mr. Flaherty. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Malaguti. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Moving on to item 4, Consideration to Approve the Joint Partnership with the Town of Watertown in Building a Town Tribute. Do we have a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I move that the Board approve the joint partnership with the Town of Watertown in building a town tribute to the history and legacy of the Watertown High School Indians.
Thank you, Mrs. Hosking. Do we have a second?
I second.
Thank you, Mrs. Eastman. Do we have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Just to clarify, opposed?
Aye.
One. All in favor? I'm sorry.
Abstentions.
Abstentions? Motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to item 5, Consideration to Approve the Amount of the Appropriations Requested from the Town of Watertown. Do we have a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair. I move that the Board approve of Dr. Allison Villanueva making an appropriation request to the Town Council in the amount of $2,834,608 on behalf of the Board of Education.
Thank you, Mr. Makowski. Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you, Mr. Malaguti. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions? Motion carries. Moving on to item 6, Consideration for the Approval of a Gift. The Lambert Family, Mr. Lambert- The Lambert family, Mr. Lambert's wife and children donated an enormous amount of tools and equipment to be used by students in the Technical Education Department at Watertown High School. Do we have a motion to accept this generous donation?
Yes, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I move that the board approve of the generous donation of tools and equipment valued at approximately $4,260 made by the Lambert family of Oldville to the Technical Education Department at Watertown High School, and that a letter of appreciation be sent to the donor.
Thank you, Mrs. Rosa. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Makowski. Any discussion? Mr. Flaherty?
Madam Chair, beautiful family, beautiful man, beautiful legacy, and incredibly generous gift, and join everyone, I'm sure, very pleased to vote for it.
Thank you. I would just like to add that some of those tools are the same exceptionally kept and maintained tools that Mr. Lambert used to make his granddaughter a desk, his other-grandson a bed, an enormous amount of very important family heirlooms that Mr. Lambert made for his children and his grandchildren, kept in exceptional condition. And the fact that our students in Watertown for decades are now going to be able to use those, particularly in woodworking, really is wonderful, and I'd just like to thank the family on behalf of the board for that. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Moving on to item P, future agenda items and board member comments. Any board members have comments they wish to make at this time or future agenda items they'd like to suggest? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item Q, our last round of public participation. Any members of the present public or the virtual public wish to speak to the board this evening? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on for item R. Do we have a motion to go into executive session?
Yes, Madam Chair. I move that the board go into executive session for the purpose of a discussion regarding the superintendent's evaluation. Attending the executive session will be Dr. Allison Villanueva, Leslie Karati, Catherine Rinaldi, Rob Makowski, Brian Flaherty, Karen Hosking, Josephine Rosa, Cindy Eastman, Jason Malaguti, and myself, Janelle Wilk.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? We'll take a few-minute recess, and then we will be in executive session. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Cindy?
Yes.
If you want to log off and then let me, text me whether or not you want to call my phone to be on speaker for the executive session.
Okay.
All right.
All right. I'll be calling.
Okay.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. I'll be calling this.